Councillor Rees?
Here.
Councillor Scamperley? Councillor Scamperley, you're muted sir.
Here.
Thank you. Quorum present.
At this time I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. One second. As we call on all.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dillabah?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
What's the call-in number?
They're gonna call you sir. But you're gonna need to leave the room that you're attending in, or you're going to need to mute. And it is safer for you to leave because if you're unmute, then the public will be able to attend your executive session, so.
Do we just X out then?
No sir, 'cause then I'll lose your connection. I'm sorry.
How do I leave?
You will get a call on your phone, an actual phone call. Thank you.
I understand that, but how do I leave the room here?
No, I mean physically sir. Like go to a different room wherever you are. I'm sorry. Just out of earshot, that's all we need, please.
Thank you.
Okay, did you guys meet us? Upon returning from executive session, let the record reflect that all members of council are still present. And this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by our city manager and fire chief Steve Jelly.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to purchase a new seventy-five-foot quint aerial fire apparatus fire truck. Whereas the city of Augsburg solicited bids for a new fire truck and whereas Churchville Fire Equipment Corporation has provided a satisfactory bid for a new seventy-five-foot quint aerial apparatus fire truck that meets the needs of the Augsburg Fire Department. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city manager or is designee is authorized to enter into a contract with Churchville Fire Equipment Corporation for a sum not to exceed nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for the purchase of said new fire truck. Be it further resolved that the expense for this purchase will be covered by a New York State Financial Restructuring Board grant and will be charged to the FY twenty-twenty-two account number A three-four-one-zero-point-three-one-zero.
I'll make a motion for that. No second. On discussion, anyone?
When we solicited bids for the public, can you explain the, the, um, I never heard of that, but...
Correct. So we, in a, in a contract, admissible contract, um, consortium similar to using the state bid, the Houston-Galveston Contract Compact, Usable Compact Contract is one the city has used previous for purchasing DPW vehicles. So we're ultimately using that contract mechanism and their contracting system to be able to purchase the apparatus that we wanted. Both these apparatus were available through that process and we, again, we solicited from Pierce Manufacturing and we solicited from Shakerly Fire Apparatus, which represents Toyn Fire Trucks.
And this one's like thirty-seven thousand more than the competitor and we have a good justification for that.
We do, counselor. I think, and I think it's about thirty-nine thousand dollars difference. So the Pierce truck was not the lowest of the two bids, but we believe it was the most efficient for a couple of reasons. The most important being right now, the Pierce fire apparatus, we were able to identify a truck that is currently stocked and built. It's been being used for a demo for a few months and we can have that truck delivered in thirty-to-sixty-day timeframe. Ordering a truck from any other manufacturer at this point, including Pierce, if we didn't get this, this demo truck from them would be sometime first quarter into the second quarter of year twenty-twenty-three. So we'd be looking at somewhere between twelve to fourteen, sixteen months to get a truck. So I think the additional money is justified frankly by getting the truck immediately and getting it on, onsite. We also think the quality, the reputation, the history of Pierce Manufacturing warrants the, the additional cost. It is, it is not the cheap, cheapest of fire apparatus to purchase or from companies, but they've got a history that is significant. And again, we believe after extensive research, this is the best and most efficient opportunity for the city.
It's my understanding too, if we were to have a fire truck built, there's not really a guarantee on the price. It could go up and also the timeline is not guaranteed, etc.
Yeah, certainly, mayor, with every, everything we've seen right now, price, no, no vendors are guaranteeing prices for any segment lengths of time. The, the, the market is just too volatile right now and the scarcity of materials. The delivery dates, again, I think we've, we've seen with some of the things that we've ordered already, delivery dates are slipping. Typical time on a fire truck is anywhere from nine to twelve months. So they're projecting a little bit longer, but I think that we, it'd be safe to say that it would be pretty lucky if we ordered one today to get one in twelve to fifteen months. So that's why, again, I think that this apparatus, when we, when we received word that we got the grant, we called out to the company. They had had a demo truck that was in the local area being used that we had talked to them about previously when we were looking at another procurement possibility and funds for it. That truck had already been sold. Again, we just, we feel the timing was, was really luck was on our side, quite honestly.
I'm eager to, to get it into service. I think it'd be great for our fire department. I commend you and Don McCarthy and the committee that looked into it. And I think it's all, it's, it's great news.
I think we're very lucky. We have a grant to pay for it. We found the truck. It'll be in service quickly. And we're lucky enough. So, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
One second. How many hours and miles are on the new truck? Sorry, I should have asked earlier, but I just thought of it.
I don't have the information from me, counselor, Kenny. I can certainly get it. I, I would, I would say to you, it's not, not many. These, these demo trucks, obviously for the cost of these, they don't, they don't use them. They're not, they're not in service. So the mileage is typically what they, what they have running between location showing.
When it came up, it had eighteen-hundred miles.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say close to two thousand, but I can't, I don't know for sure, but I think it was somewhere near there. But again, they, they, they make a concerted effort to keep the miles and the hours low on them. Obviously, at this price, someone's not gonna get up with a used fire truck price at that point. I can verify that it's not more than two thousand.
With, with the, with, with the other quote that came in over the weekend with Toyn, Toyn is it? Have we had any assurances that we would run into any build issues?
Any what issues? Any assurances about a build, build issues?
Build, build issues as far as price going up or materials.
I believe they had a disclaimer saying that they couldn't guarantee that they were ready.
I'm sorry?
I believe they had a disclaimer.
You know, I, I think, counselor, the, the timeline was the, was the largest thing that they've made clear that, that they couldn't guarantee. And quite honestly, Pierce told us the same thing if we were talking about ordering there. But my concern is the longer this goes, the longer we talk about it, again, prices will, could change tomorrow. They certainly could change next week. It's not, not so much concerned about once we sign a contract, price, price is changing, although it, it certainly could occur, but I don't, I don't, I didn't see that as a problem as much as it's just the, the longer, every day we talk about this, the prices are gonna, are gonna go up. Like a lot of other things we've seen, this is not germane to this industry at all.
I guess, I guess my, my next question would be if, if we were, you know, and I'm not suggesting we are, and I appreciate all the feedback from Don and yourself, but going forward, if we were to purchase potentially a new truck, would, would, would the, the truck we have in service last for, say, what was it, the next quarter, until the next quarter of next year?
Just circling back real quick on Counselor Kennedy's question, right now the truck has just about twenty-five-hundred miles on it. And Counselor Powers, to your question, yeah, I don't, the, the issue with the twenty-seven-year-old one isn't, isn't really a matter of can we make it last longer? We, we certainly have made it last this long. Can we make it last another year or another year after that? The answer is likely. Is it safe to do so? Is it cost-effective to do so? It's, it's well exceeded its, its, its shelf life or its runtime. So I, I don't think that's, that's so much the issue. Now, the reason we are purchasing this type of truck is we are, we are combining, as you heard us talk about earlier, we are combining a smaller wheelbase, well, one less axle and a smaller wheelbase for the chassis. We're giving up about twenty-five feet in ladder heights, so we've got a more maneuverable truck that we can use on a, on an everyday basis, not just for, for special calls. So with the, with the reduction in the manpower, this gives us an added capability to bring with us. If we need it immediately, we have it. We're not waiting for the truck to come. So I think from a sense of urgency perspective, for me, it's the truck that's replacing, is twenty-seven years old. And, and again, it, it, it allows us another level of functionality on, immediately that's, that's brought with us.
Oh, is Donnie still there? Um, Donnie McCarthy?
Yep, yes.
Could, how many miles are on the twenty-seven-year-old truck that we're gonna replace?
A lot.
He said he doesn't know.
Well, I mean, is it like thirty thousand or forty thousand for the most part? I mean, it's like, it, it, it's not driven all the time, you know? I'm just kinda curious and...
He's, he's gonna check real quick. I, again, trucks like that piece aren't, don't get worn out because of miles. Age and, and time catches up with them, technology. This, this particular truck is, is long. It's, it's very difficult to get down a lot of streets in the city. It was, it's certainly a great apparatus for, for the old storefront areas, but use of it in the residential neighborhoods is, is, is difficult at best. Give me one second.
Yeah, well, and, and also, it's like I say, that I, I was, I was lucky enough the day that was in town to see it. And the, the gentleman that drawed it, brought it, he jumped out of the front seat, put the boom, he put the booms out, jumped out of the front seat, put the ladder up, over the power lines, seventy-five feet in the air, and it was under two minutes. And it was just him doing anything. It's, it's a beautiful truck.
So the technology, obviously, you know, after twenty-seven years has certainly improved drastically. One of the other functionalities of this truck is instead of having four outriggers or stabilization points, this truck has two. So it will allow for the, a little more rapid deployment. Again, the hydraulic systems on it, they're, they're newer, smoother, you know, a, a little more detailed level of control. I mean, against twenty-seven years, the technology is certainly, certainly. And the mileage number you were looking for on the, so just, just shy of twenty eight thousand miles, twenty seven, eight hundred and some odd. So just shy of twenty eight thousand miles. So again, you can see about a thousand miles a year for the, for the life of that truck. This one, that one was not being used. This truck will be used every day. This will be a truck that people will see on the street each and every day, responding to just about each and every call.
Good.
Anything? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Good day. This brings us to the end of the session and we will begin with Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Counselor, before Andrea gets started, just like to inject, what we'd like to do tonight is just solicit some feedback. Again, we don't have much on the agenda, so I thought it would be an opportunity for us just to talk around a little bit with Andrea. She's worked real hard with the planning board to put together what I think is a pretty comprehensive set of, I'll call it protections. I don't think, think of it so much as restrictions, but I just think this is a new topic. It's a hot topic. I think there's a lot of pressure on the governor to get things in place, to get this, the sale of cannabis moving. And I think it's Andrea's intent in mind to make sure that Augsburg is ready, whether it takes a year from now or in six or seven months. You know, they've accelerated things and they're ready to start issuing licenses. I really want us to have had time to have been discussing this and, and be ready. Andrea?
So I, I don't have a presentation prepared for you. One of our board members, Ryan Frary, was here at the January tenth meeting, who did present a summary of the recommendations from the planning board. And this is really just an opportunity for the members of council to give me and the planning board, on behalf of the planning board, your feedback so that we can, I can either formalize this and bring it to you as an actual action item, or we can make any changes if, if there's some guidance or areas that you all think were not addressed or that you wanna change. So at this point, we're really just looking for feedback from council on how to move this forward. Keeping in mind that local governments that opt in have the responsibility to adopt local ordinances that address the time, place, and manner in which commercial cannabis can be consumed, grown, sold, those types of things.
Um, just from a philosophical standpoint, I guess, I mean, like, I really view Augsburg as a small little area that, you know, kinda competes with the surrounding towns. And I think some of the mistakes we've made in the past is that our zoning and things do get too restrictive. Businesspeople, entrepreneurs find it easier to be in Lisbon, Osugachi, in this case, Waddington, Moorestown. So we just need to be careful of that is, is, is my philosophy for what it's worth, just so that we're not putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage, losing out on any job opportunities as well as the, I think it's eight percent sales tax?
I think we get nine.
Nine, yeah. So that, that, that's my only concern. I don't recall, I, I, I browsed the, what you had provided before. But that, that's, that's how I feel about it.
I think we all know it should be in a, a business district. But I, I think, I think what really hurt Augsburg is when they put a highway and bypassed us, going around the city.
But yeah, it makes it easier for businesses to locate on the other side of the road or in some cases, this side of the roads. It's in a, it's in a different township. And, and I, I don't know what they're doing. I, I, they don't even have zoning. So probably not an awful lot. So we just gotta be careful with what we're doing.
So I don't really have much of a power in that.
I think that's a good point, John. Can, can we get a comparison to what the other towns and villages in their proximity are, are doing? How does our, how does our, the, the planning board, the zoning board, how does their, their, their details compared to, and their restrictions compared to the other towns?
We can. I don't, I know that some of the communities are just looking at it. I don't know. I don't think that there has been any other community that's further ahead than us. I don't think that any of the communities have gone as far as adopting an ordinance. I can confirm that. I know that some communities actually went as far as having a moratorium on it until there was more guidance from the state. And so we were one of the, one of the earliest communities to formally opt into it. Other communities have followed suit. To Counselor Rees's point, the, the village of, or the town of Osugachi, excuse me, does not have zoning at all. So I don't know what they're doing or quite frankly, what they're not doing regarding cannabis. I can certainly make some phone calls. I think this is what communities are, are doing right now, is, is having these types of discussions with their boards, their, their community members. So the planning board did have a public hearing, which you all probably noticed. They had that on December seventh. There were no members of the public that attended the meeting. The public hearing was opened at the beginning of the meeting and then left open again because it was remote attendance, just to make sure that no one missed out. There were no comments. There's been no phone calls or emails to the planning department regarding, regarding cannabis. So this is, the recommendation in front of you is, you know, a shot in the dark in the sense that it, it isn't being guided with feedback from council or the public. It is based solely on what other communities have done in other states primarily, because again, this is, this is new in New York State.
We gotta jump on it. It's gonna be a moneymaker. That's why the state wants it to work.
I agree. I'd like to take advantage of that situation and, and be the first. And also recognize John's point about not being too restrictive. And we can always go back and change something, you know? I, when I, I first saw the, what Ryan presented, I didn't think there was, there was too many restrictions right now. And I, I'd like to see us move forward with that, maybe one more public hearing and, and then, and then be the first. And if we make changes after that, we make some changes.
So the council would be required to hold a public hearing before making any formal adoption. It would need to go through a full legal review and we would need to do seekers. So we can certainly gear this up, but I, I wanted to make sure that council had every opportunity to provide feedback, even if it was just to tell me that there was a comma or a typo somewhere. So welcome those comments, but if there are none, you know, we, we can just keep this moving along.
If you could just take our comments back to the planning board.
You're gonna have restrictions like the ABC board.
I don't feel like this is restrictive. Are there specific comments that you would like to address something?
No, I, I like.
I just expressed my opinion.
Yeah, I think the level of detail we're looking for from the council is if there's, if you don't want something in the, in the business district that's been recommended, if you don't like the two hundred and fifty foot buffer, you want it to be five hundred or you don't want it at all, I mean, concrete comments at this point are really what the planning board needs. If you want to send it back to the planning board or if you want to just move it forward amongst yourselves.
I think we should start moving it forward. Start getting into the seeker process. Agree.
Thanks.
Next, City Manager Stephen Jolly will discuss the goals and objectives for the workshop.
Counsel, along the same lines as the, as the cannabis project, I think talking about establishing the goals and objectives for twenty twenty-two. And just if I could call off your attention to the, to the budget documents in the presentation that I gave at the outset, and I've included that in the budget document or updated to reflect the actual numbers, not the proposed numbers. But in the last couple of pages of that, I laid out economic development priorities, recreation priorities, and governmental priority initiatives. I'd like to use that as a start. I think those are three significant areas. I, I believe certainly adding public safety priorities is probably a fourth area. What I'd hope to accomplish tonight is just to determine kind of the overarching areas that you'd like to talk about so that we can then develop the priorities within those and keep bringing those to council and then ultimately sending it to the public for, for comment. But if, if we could start with the, again, the economic development priorities, we started out simply with waterfront development, modernization of the zoning ordinance and code enforcement policies and grant agency partnership. Recreation priorities was established, a recreation committee, the skate park, and the ready project to include facilities and upgrades to existing. The governmental priorities were sales tax, home rule legislation, St. Lawrence County shared and consolidated services, St. Lawrence County psychiatric center properties, Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority properties, combined career and volunteer fire department initiative. Again, I'm certain there are other areas under each of those three. And then if we add public safety to that, we will certainly add some others. Those were four major areas that I thought we would focus on. If there's another, certainly if we could add that, I'll craft the document, send it around to all of you and we'll just start filling in kind of each of the sub priorities under each of those, those major headings. If there's another way council wants to proceed, certainly, you know, willing to, to set up or facilitate whatever, whatever we need to do. Again, as I said the last meeting, I just wanna be careful that we don't, you know, reinvent the wheel to something as we've, you know, we're working down, you know, we have a, a current budget document that's been, been approved for the year. I think this is good news and that it will help give council the opportunity to ensure that the city manager and the department heads are all executing within the current priorities of the budget that council has expected. And I will be prepared to have each of the department heads talk about their priorities, the ones that are listed here, and any new ones that, that we develop so that we are staying on track. I think one of the important things for council to continue to see is under these major headings, how many things at any one given time we're working on so we set a, a realistic output expectation. So with that, I will yield to council for, for their direction.
Well, there are a lot of projects starting this year. We've got the ready project.
So this is, I'm sorry?
Our sewage pump station on Main Street, refurbishing our city hall with a new roof, HVAC system. There's a lot of projects going ahead this year coming and, and a lot of financial responsibility on the city's part too.
So this is a discussion of the workshop and how it should be organized? It's not the workshop?
I, I would think so. And maybe, and really I think, I think it's kind of both. I think from, what I'd like to walk away with tonight is the framework. I'd like to be able to present or give council, you know, a framework of how we can do this instead of everyone just having a white paper with, with thirty ideas on it. I'd like to be able to say, here's our, here's our framework. Let's put our priorities. Because I think the important thing we'll see is that very quickly, you know, it will fill up. Current things we're working on, and then we'll see what room we've got for, you know, additional things that are already there. But I, I think if we, if we go with the ones that I spoke of or, and adding the additional and if there's, you know, try to determine tonight, what are our, what are our major heading topics that council would like to have this? Because I think it should be a document that is reviewed, you know, perhaps at every, at least once a month at every meeting. And we report where are we with these priorities, what are done, what are in motion, what, what may have fallen off? You know, and then, then certainly if we have to add something, it allows council to look at the priority list and determine, you know, what is our bandwidth for adding something, you know, midway through the year.
So these are some of the broader goals and then when we have the workshop, the, the task would be underneath it, whatever that list may be that the council comes up with.
Yes, Counselor, it's way.
That's my vision. Sounds good to me. When, when, when are we gonna hold the? It was supposed to be tonight. That's why I was wondering. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I know. Then there was so much work. Everyone was out, so we're kind of catching up on that.
So I say tonight, delving into kind of the workshop topics, you know, using this meeting as a workshop since it's here is, I've, I've given you four and hour. Are there any other major headings outside of economic development, recreation, governmental, and public safety? Are there any other major headings that I can, I can add, put into a document? And then the next meeting, I think we would all be prepared to bring in, you know, what we want to have under each of those. There's four headings now or if we end up with five or six.
No, I'm very glad to see, I guess, in our government priorities, the, the psych center land and the Bridge and Port Authority properties. But I, you know, I, I did write a list and they do fit in those categories.
Without adding any additional, those four are enough?
Those, pardon me?
Those four are enough. Economic development, recreation, governmental, and public safety. Those are, I think everything you got would fit into one of those.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's some form of public comment at some point in the work session. Would we could set up some parameters for that as well?
Absolutely. Could, could we, could we have the workshop? And then if there's action out of that to, I don't know, if you formally adopt, then that would be the public participation part?
I would think, I would think tonight will, will give me a good start. I'll send this to each of you. I think you, you, you'd kind of line up your sub, your, your priorities under each of the, the major topics. We can talk about it at the next meeting or, or schedule a workshop for it, whichever works out. And then from there, we'll refine the list. And I, I think it's at that point, we certainly want to, to publicize it in, in a draft form, whether we have official public hearings or public listening sessions or make it available during a couple of council meetings. So during public input, people can call and specifically make comments on it before some kind of formal adoption. I think that would be the, the process we're gonna follow.
How about planning with some studies and, you know, planning, just general planning, that could be a category?
Okay. Another comment outside of the four and, and Counselor Rees's suggestion with planning is, is potentially looking at some kind of housing program to rehab some of the older, older housing in the city of Augsburg for some of the, uh, people in the city that, that are, that are struggling and trying to maintain property. Any kind of aspect that we can have to fund some kind of housing program to reinvest in our, our older infrastructure and, and housing.
Yeah, Mike, Mike's right. That's a huge priority.
Couple that with a, a strong model of tourism with other river, riverfront communities to share in, and along the, from spring to late fall, along with these other communities and attempt to work collectively in a tourism model.
How about one more category, funding, how we're gonna fund these things?
Got it?
Could you hear it?
Yes, sir. I got it. Okay, so Andrea and I will formulate this, this into some kind of an organized document presentation. And then I think the intent will be to send it out to everybody. And then, you know, we'll send you the, I would say, the current priorities or initiatives, projects that we have, significant things that are in each of these. We'll look for your input on that for discussion at the next opportunity we get together. I'll just converse with all of you back and forth through email, whether you wanted to schedule another standalone workshop or if we just wanna cover it at the next meeting. We've got a couple of weeks till our next meeting. So likely Andrea and I will have all this together and sent to you, you know, so easily it can be ready for the next meeting. But then from there, depending on how much discussion is needed and debate, if you will, whether you schedule a standalone session or not. But we'll have something ready and, and out soon as far as the framework. the framework.
Yeah, I'd rather do it sooner than later. You know, it's February, tomorrow's February, so we've already lost a month.
It's just like everyone to remember that the ready project, and the Main Street sewage pump station, and City Hall, and other things that are all in progress. I think the city's part could be as much as $5 million for those projects. So we're already committed to a lot of, a lot of money being spent, but a lot of good progress, too.
And I think one of the good, as we get this list, it'll help the Comptroller's Office be able to help orient council, kind of in each of the areas where we are with, you know, what money we have coming in from other sources, and what kind of money over time we'll be looking at, you know, from a city investment perspective. So I think that's a, I think all this is good. But I would, what I would hopefully do after this is probably in the June, July timeframe, we would update this document again. Might be still pretty new to us, but just as a matter of priority, I think it's probably appropriate we do this in that timeframe, so that as we're moving into the budget preparations, the staff has that list in which to, you know, guide it and putting a budget together. So we don't appear to be doing it in reverse. We're putting the budget forward, and then trying to plan priorities around the budget. We do it the other direction. And I feel like we had lots of, you know, intent from council, priorities, et cetera. And I don't feel like we didn't have that last year, but I think a deliberate process like this keeps it in the open, it keeps it standing on its own, so that it's not lost, you know, or buried within the, you know, the, a lot of action items in a normal meeting. So I think this, this gives everyone a chance to ensure that they've, they've got input to it.
You are correct. You do this in June and July, and the budget's prepared. So we had an executive session.
This one, I just wondered if anybody was attending the NICOM winter legislative meeting, February 13th and 14th in Albany, or if anybody's interested in going?
I was looking at that today. It's interesting.
Well, there's, there's a lot of good topics there. You know, covers the budget. We have a very serious matter with the sales tax and the powers that be that Albany might behoove us, or someone to attend.
Are we active members of NICOM at this point?
We are, yes.
Yeah.
They are good functions, John. They're very good functions. Unfortunately, I have, well, wait a minute, what date'd you say it was?
13th and 14th.
It's a Sunday, Monday?
No, I don't think so.
February?
Yeah. I think the 10th is our council meeting, or no?
So, yeah.
Oh, the 14th is?
The 14th is council.
Yeah, we could switch that if there are people interested in going. But take a look at it anyways.
Yeah, the announcement came out today. If everybody didn't get it, I'll resend it. And if you're interested, let's figure out how we, how we put it together for everybody who isn't. If we needed to change the meeting date, that would be our next meeting. So if we're gonna change, actually, Kathy.
Okay. So we were to have a second executive session, but we will not have that now, because, well, we don't have enough city councils in person, and we don't have all the feedback from them to do it. So we'll set this up for the next meeting, please. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh.